The first item on the agenda is for the election of the chairman of the committee. So can I have the nominations please?
Alf.
I nominate councillor Low.
I nominate Joyce.
I'll second her. I nominate Joyce. I'll second her.
We wouldn't have a... sorry, we wouldn't second somebody else.
Oh, we'd, yeah. You're being nominated for it. Just to make sure.
Sorry. Yeah, I would like to nominate myself if I could have a second.
Is there anybody willing to second? I would second councillor Low. Right, so Martin has nominated himself and I've seconded him. So you've got three candidates now. Anybody else? So, open your... Right, so we go through the vote process. I'll explain the process as we go on. Can... can I have a show of hands please for the first person who was nominated, which is Alf? All those, before we do that, because we've only got one vote here.
Yeah, yeah, one vote for each.
Yeah, each member has just one vote. You've only got one vote. That's one vote for one trip. You can't vote twice. You can't vote.
Could we not have a ballot?
So, are you requesting a written ballot?
Well, I think it would be easier then, people would understand, wouldn't be confused. It's just a crossing a box or a tick.
You need three chances to agree.
And I would support the request of Martin George of the third councillor to do so as well. So that's three castles with proposals to sign ballot.
Yeah.
Exactly, we propose a signature.
No, no, it's fine.
It just makes it straightforward. In case there's a miscamp with that.
A miscamp?
No, we...
This is not RCC. As far as that's from the asshole.
Have I got to edit it this time? Thank you. Well, you've prepared.
What do you know, you and me.
Not mine, I know.
So we have to ignore the names that weren't nominated.
Yeah, so that's why everybody gets to make first and then we'll pass.
It's not too much, I like it. It's on here, presumably we've got any tick or line.
Which is either...
Across, I mean.
Whatever, doesn't matter.
It's a signature by them.
Well, it's a signed ballot, so we need a signature please.
To repass it.
Yeah, no, it's a... You actually change. It's not a change. It's already signed, yeah?
Yes, it has to be signed, I'm afraid, that's the time now.
Well, I do, but I actually thought that Scotland would be there.
How about two?
Well, it's not for travelling, it's two years' time in Scotland. If you need a different perspective, it's not just because you're the chair, you're aware of that sort of...
Yeah, that, that.
Exactly, yeah. The rules just haven't evolved in a two cities, two nations. Last six to seven, you probably take a break there. Looking out, you're doing this.
Yeah, the councillor, I guess?
It's two years' time, or up to two years' time.
Ladies and gentlemen, so it gets slightly complicated, we have four votes for councillor Low, four votes for councillor Lucas, one vote for councillor Brooks. In this situation, the person with the least amount of... there is no absolute majority. Okay? Because there are nine of you, one candidate needs five votes. So the accepted procedure is that councillor Brooks withdraws and a new vote is taken. Okay, so same procedure again please.
International elections.
Sorry?
Yeah, very carefully doing it properly.
This is for my relatives who didn't get an option.
So now you're either voting for councillor Low or councillor Lucas.
White smoke, he went up to...
He's got white smoke as well.
Yeah.
There's no safe... The election that the two years' time. So, some of these things, do you have some... Because when you say like, in the years, I think two years ago, I'm in London, so I can say... And they go, well, we still need to make the decisions, because you're not really here, you're not quite there yet. Yeah, so it's... The thing is, you know, joking, I don't have some doors that are open. Isn't that probably not true? You know, probably, so you've got, you know, the same... You know, find somewhere else, it's fine. And you don't, the latter's a good point, I'm trying to say, you still do to the same way you do. It's a tactic, it's something, that's what it's going to do, it's quite a song. You've got... It's a good place to... This job, she's... And, yeah, so along the count of eight, I think I'm...
Right, okay, everybody. Situation now is that our four votes for councillor Low, four votes for councillor Mrs Lucas. There's one member who has declined to vote, so it is four votes all. And in that case, the chairman may use his casting vote.
Well, as seconded councillor Low, I would speak councillor Low as chairman. It's fine to handle that and return to my seat. So congratulations, Alf. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Alf. He was seconded, yeah. How are you?
I'm fine. It's a decent last round, so it's pretty good.
Forgot to sign.
I think I got a lot of them, I missed some of them, actually needed to go on.
Right then, I suppose we've got a new one. The next item on the agenda is item two, which is apologies, I believe, which is to receive apologies for any absence. And they're everybody present, aren't they? So that's that. So the item three is the election of a vice chairman. Anybody want to put themselves forward for vice chairman or deputy chairman of this planning parks? I'm going to nominate Joyce. So Joyce nominated, seconded by David, anybody else wants to be considered? Councillor Brooks nominated, anybody want to second councillor Brooks?
I'll second him.
Councillor Dewis. Are we happy to go to vote for Joyce first, or yes?
We're going to see if two can vote, it's which will have to be.
No, because Alison is responsible for us on this particular council.
Okay, sorry Alison, I didn't mean to. Because he was doing the last one.
Just in case. Well, we're going to go, right, all we're going to do, we're going to go with the first nomination, which is councillor Joyce Lucas. So I believe it's just one vote of each member's allowed. So, all those in favour of Joyce? One, two, three, four, five, six. And five, two. Just do the maths and do the chat at that.
I think that's a no for Joyce.
And me, yeah, and I'll vote for... I'll vote for Joyce as well, so I'd be forgetting here. So that's my report. So, Joyce, I've got to leave at this point.
We've seen, you know, the call option, where you've got six candidates, three vacancies.
Yeah, it's going to be a nice one. And then you haven't got my vote for that one.
Yeah, but when you get the situation...
Okay. Moving on, item four is declarations of interest. Members are asked to declare if required any discloseable pecuniary interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Any other interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Members are also invited to inform the Plough of any changes to their register of members' interests. Is anybody declaring anything?
I'm declaring on item twenty-one four, this is called in Willow Crescent, because I own property in the road. So I believe that's a pecuniary interest.
Okay.
And then item number twenty-one, so I won't be voting on the...
You stay in the room.
I'll stay in the room, but I won't be voting on that one. I need clarification on the CAB one, which is twenty-one two. I'm a council representative, but I think I can vote, because it's just another... Is that right, Richard?
No, you can't.
Because there's no financial interest.
We discussed that you can't vote if you are appointed representative.
The CAB role is just purely observing. There's no input from the representative, you're just there as an observer.
Okay, I'm just going to... Richard, I think I'm correct as well in what Richard has said there, that if we're on an outside body, because we've had this, where we've had people, I believe, fifteen, they've been challenged that there's an interest. So, happy for you to discuss it, stay in the room, but you won't be able to vote on it.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
And also clarify, chairman, I did tell you, you could have asked for a dispensation.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I just, when I was talking...
Okay, any other rules? Nope.
It doesn't really matter.
Okay. Well done. Item five is minutes, to confirm the minutes of the meeting, the planning and parks committee held on Wednesday, the 20th of February. Alf Paul and Michael will have to abstain on these, but anybody got any comments or anything?
And then new members have to abstain, because it wasn't...
Indeed. So, I just need a proposal to accept those, I prefer. Who will say that was... so proposed by Stan. Yeah, all those in favour? Yeah, one, two, three, yeah. Okay, that's... and those abstaining? Yeah. So that's carried away.
Paul's abstaining.
Paul's abstaining. Mike was abstaining. Yeah, Martin, you're abstaining, aren't you?
Yeah.
He was here. Councillor questions, I don't believe there's any councillor questions have been notified. No. Members' reports, received members' reports relating to works of committees. Are there any reports apart from... Molly? No. No? Just very briefly. Promotions, this may be repeating stuff that's been said before, but it's just helping you clarify. Promotion working group, a fun day in August. Just letting you know that some provisional arrangements, because we've been doing work behind the scenes. We're looking at the lines of Rutland as a potential food tent. We're looking at dog grooming, people coming on board. And I'm also getting negotiations with Bouncy Castle. As Richard and Alison are digging out some information that the previous councillor had done for us, so we can get as much interest on August the 23rd to make it a fun day. At the last promotions working group, we suggested the bunting and the flags could or should come down at the end of June 2015. So that might be a note for the Plough to action in end of June. Whoever is doing this for the council, can they be asked to be careful? As the bunting should last more than one or two years if treated correctly. As a side note, I believe our meeting... Oh, yeah. The minutes should be retained in the office. So what it is, in future, the promotions working group minutes that I have in this white folder, I'm going to raise a folder and have it kept in the council. So anybody who wants to look at what we're doing can go in there. It's not top secret, promotions working group. Or none of these outside groups should be top secret. They should be open to all councillors. And I'll make sure this happens. Fitness centre, I've said before that a full report will be coming to the council in July, that's still the case. But in the meantime, just to make you aware, I will be holding a surgery stroke open consultation on July the 4th from 10am till 14, till 2pm in the afternoon at the fitness centre. I'm going to get this put in the paper, hopefully get in the paper, I'll be putting the notice board up as well. The chairman Alf is doing a pop down for an hour first thing in the morning. I'll need at least one of the councillors to be with me during the day. Doesn't necessarily have to be somebody from the ward, but ideally if it can be the walkout, because I know Joyce is on holiday. Mike, hopefully you'll be along. And anybody that's interested in what goes on at the fitness centre.
David, David, shall we?
David. Yeah, yeah, who's good for that, I don't worry. I'll be poking people in the ribs to make sure they turn up. Well, if we light a fire, you'll be, yes? And the other note is, I'd appreciate some assistance from Richard at some point on funding options, not now, obviously. However, can some thoughts be given as to where we and how we can raise a certain value of money? So that's my report there.
Have you said bunting down in June?
End of June, was it not the end of June? The red and white, if it ever crossed the term. When do you want it then?
After, after Friday.
Yes, which is the end of June, is that?
No, it's August.
Oh, right, oh, end of August, okay, just to be right. Okay, in that fact, and one thing which I haven't written down is that this evening when I came in, I had two letters waiting for me. The writs, no. And what it is, it's just two letters from the last year Yeomanry, the L G Y people thanking the council and the museum and people who have opened very much, extending the courtesy of the freedom of entry that took place this month. And that these will be left in the office.
Can I just make a comment there that what the fellow spoke to me this Saturday evening, and said he thought it was excellent. The whole of the freedom of entry was very good, even to us, and standing together, two of us. So I'd like to propose that the same we've done with the way that we're organizing that freedom of entry.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I'll accept that. And what it is, I'll accept it with Alison though, because in that fact, I'm only the mouthpiece, which is evident. Whereas Joyce did, whereas Alison did all the legwork. So in that fact, it was a joint thing, so make a note in the minutes that Adam and Alison get a big pat on the back, but no remuneration. Plough's report, over to you, Richard.
Thanks, chairman. I won't go through a list of planning decisions or planning recommendations from the last meeting of planning subcommittee, you've got them all there. And then, so over the page. And we have quite a few planning decisions from RCC, so if anybody wants to see those, please contact us and obviously we can make that available to you. Only four items are in scape, art work is starting next Tuesday, the 30th of June. So firstly really be to sort of take, start taking it down. And then they are hoping, I was quite amazed, I met them earlier today, that they are hoping to be finished by Friday. So that's how quickly they are hoping to get it done. Prompt in the park, just to remind you about this, six o'clock on this Saturday. And also to let you know the request of the organizers, we have organized for the public toilets in Church Street to be open and they will be manned during the duration of the event. So that will be, I think, probably a cost of about sixty pounds to open town council. But it seemed, rather than having no toilets or having them manned, it made sense to have them manned so that there aren't any issues on the evening, expecting it to be a busy night in the park. Speaking of the parks, signage. Three, we've got a little green sign saying welcome to Cuts Close and also Royces Recreation Ground. Three in Cuts are looking a bit sorry for themselves, they all need replacing. It's not, it's not just, it's actually a plastic sticker that goes on the backing. The metal is a little bent on all three. We've got Open and Bloom coming through there on the 7th of July, so we're going to get those three replaced. Joyce, very kindly went to Royces for me earlier on, two there need replacing as well. So if members are happy, I'm going to order four of each and then we've got some spare. So we can then, we don't have to go, it's company Castleton that do it for us. And just to reiterate that, Open and Bloom judges Tuesday, the 7th of July. David, what time are they here?
It starts at ten o'clock. I think it's about, when you meet them.
I meet them at two.
Two.
That's what I've been told. Is there going to change?
I've just been doing the rules.
Right, okay. Well, anyway, they're coming through on...
I'll let them know.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know.
I'll let them know.
Yeah, so 7th of July, Open and Bloom judges.
Okay, ordinarily we don't take questions on... Sorry, sorry, get them, when you finish. Ordinarily we don't take questions, but councillor Brooks, what are your suggestions?
Yeah, can I just make a quick comment on the park signage? I hear that it's going to be replaced. The council, some time ago, when they invented these signs, agreed that there would be braille on them. But in, since then, nothing's happened. But also, it's on the agenda this evening, the green flag didn't light them. So maybe we could look into something different, rather than the utilitarian, I can't say that, sorry, but description that was put in the green flag report and ignored.
Okay, I'll let... I'll let, I'll let you.
Okay.
I'll let, you can pick that one up there. Brilliant, thank you. Right, item nine, deputations by members of the public, so involvement now sort of up here, I'm hoping. Members of the public are invited to address the meeting in accordance with the procedures laid down in our standing orders, which you may or may not be aware of, but in... Oh, you've all got a copy. Basically, you can talk about anything on tonight's agenda. So now I'll open the floor to members of the public, three minutes.
No, no, you go first, I don't mind.
Shall I go first? I'll just prepare myself. Anybody got a problem if I use my phone as a timer? It just switched off.
No, no, you can do that, that's fine, we'll be watching you anyway, so, yes, that's fine.
I'll stand over here, because I don't like talking to the backs of people's heads.
Okay.
Is that okay with all of you?
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we need our new tables.
Yeah. We're going to christen it, aren't we?
And what is your name, please, again?
Oh, yeah, I'm Mrs Dawson, speaking of the husband himself, we put a letter about a tree in Cuts Close.
I thought it was Mrs Dawson, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Right, well, I don't know many of you here, if you know me. And I hope you all, do you all know the tree that I've got to discuss?
Yes, I think we do.
Yeah, so I don't give photos.
No, I believe we have an agenda item here which covers...
Okay.
That's the trees there.
Right, well, at the moment, I've done a quick recess of the tree and it's approximately about thirty foot tall by forty foot across after it's been trimmed. The only thing I found put wrong in my letter, and I put it's gone back over twelve years, but I think it might be a bit more than that. Because when we first came down, we saw Idris Evans, and it was when the tree was growing. They were using that and the one next to it as goalposts. Again, this shows how near it is to our fence, which is causing a lot of trouble. We had to have a couple of summers of banging, damage, God knows what. Then more recently, which had been about 208, we came down to see the clerk as the forest park trees in the corner were now forest-like. He did take a couple of those down with the damage, two or three, I forget exactly how many. But the one now which is right at the bottom of the fence, it's been a nuisance for years. Apart from the fact all the leaves fall, have gone under the garage sheds that we've got at the bottom. So it's just making a total mess everywhere, so high we don't, any sunlight at all in the winter. We would like the tree felled as the first option. And I understand in the park behind it, there's something like about twenty new trees in the top quarter of that park now been planted. So it's not as though there's going to be a shortage of them. I've got nothing against trees, don't get me wrong, we've got some in our garden, in fact, we've got one that's thirty years old. We keep it well trimmed, it's only just under hedge height. It's not, not a gigantic tree, yet it could be if we let it. The trimming, it has never been really successful. One year we just did the pan of Indian leaf. Another year, I think thirteen, it came in January in a snowstorm, so not a lot was done then. Fourteen, April fourteen, we saw them arrive. Somebody in the park had the work done, they disappeared off again, and then we came back till April fifteen, which is obviously the last time it was cut. And they took about so much off the top, the sides have been left. Just doesn't seem to be satisfactory, to be honest, trimming it. And we've come down several times to the clerk, not particularly seen Richard every time, but we do seem to get different answers on it. And we really just want to know what is going on, and is there any chance of getting it felled? Oh, that's not bad, and I've got fifteen seconds left. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs Dawson. Any, any of the petitions we're still making, once I get the...
Me, no, I mean, there are a few of those.
Right, thank you. That's all public deputations then. Thank you very much, Mrs Dawson. And per charts, item ten on the agenda is the tree at Royces Recreation Ground. Councillor Brooks, Martin, has compiled the report, there's a picture of the tree, I believe that's the tree. So I'm going to take, before I let you start, Martin, I'm just going to go...
Just a quick one, as chairman, I'm very pleased to see this report coming forward from the new member. And I know I urge all new members, if they are editing at all, which they want to bring to the council's notice to put their reports forward in this space. It doesn't mean to say we're going to agree with it, but at least it's a discussion point, which I'm very pleased to see as a goal.
Okay. Councillor Brooks, do you wish to add anything more to your report, or are you watching wait as if there are any questions?
I wanted, once you've dealt with the letter, to actually read the report, because members of the public don't have it. And I think that just shows on record that we've done it properly and fairly.
Okay.
So I don't know, I don't have anything to do with the letter consideration, so I don't know what was supposed to happen with that. Is that just for information?
Yeah, so that is just information, so are you going to read out this report?
Yes, I think it's right to, to do it, if that's okay with the chairman.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I'll stand up for them.
This, councillor Brooks is going to read the report for the benefit of the members of the public, which is...
And for over ten years, residents whose property backs onto the northern boundary to Royces Recreation Ground feel they have been in dispute with Open Town Council. The residents say they are caused a great deal of stress when each year they approach the town council and request the trees are maintained. The tree was last pruned in April... The tree was last pruned in April 2015, costing the town council three hundred and twenty pounds. Prior to this, it was pruned in January 2013. This latter work was part of other works in the park, so it is not possible to say how much the works of the tree cost in this case. I believe it was also suggested some time ago that a new tree was planted in front of this tree, and when fully grown, the original tree would be removed. However, I am sure most members are aware, trees take a long time to grow. The residents have spoken to me and requested my assistance. I visited the site and found a number of trees in the area, including new trees. The recommendations are, number one, felling, although I'm not an advocate of felling trees, in this case, I believe the tree is costing a large sum of money, and after meeting the residents, I believe this long ongoing dispute is causing them distress and harm. The reputation of the town council is also being harmed. I recommend that the tree is felled. Recommended two, for your consideration, is a replacement. Due to the number of trees already planted in the surrounding area, I do not think the tree needs to be replaced. If councillors are minded to see a replacement planted further away from the residents' property, I think it should be replaced with a mature tree at an estimated cost of two hundred pounds, as a local nursery who would deliver and plant it. Recommendation number three, if none of the above is approved this evening, could the town council implement a maintenance plan and notify the residents of dates, so they do not need to continually visit the town council? So then we move on to decisions required. Number one, to decide if the town council will felled the tree. Number two, to decide if a replacement tree is required. Three, to agree on a maintenance programme if the tree is not felled.
Okay, thank you, I meant to say, Martin, actually, you don't actually have to stand at these meetings, but I appreciate the.
Well, I like to, because then I know I shut up when I sit down.
Okay, I'm going to open this up to the council now to make any comments or suggestions. Any feedback from councillors?
Michael. I was asked then for perspective, this tree, in fact, there is one or two quite close together, having been maintained over the years, now less height than the one to the right of it, looking towards the back of the garden. Is the aim of the whole area to have trees in it as a total recreation ground, or, and if so, can they be mature trees? What is the perspective against which we're making this decision? Do we need lots of trees in this area? Well, is it forest or? On its own, if you look at it narrowly, it's an attractive cherry tree. Yeah. Why would you felled an attractive cherry tree? Normally, it would be very hard if we did that. Question is being asked, can it be felled on a day because of somebody's house who backs onto an eighteen-teens, it's about eighteen-teens, between the boundaries dense of the lady's house, the garden and the tree? So you have a tree, what is the perspective against which is going to be judged?
Can I speak without these, but if you speak to me, I need to put them back in.
Yes.
Okay. The history of this tree goes back to the Scouts, for those who don't know. The Scouts actually planted all the trees down this area. I spoke to the Commissioner of Scouts and he was horrified that it was going to be felled. I have spoken to the man who actually was in charge of the planting of those trees with the Scouts, and he was horrified. So that is the history. The other bit of history was that the resident did, and rightly so, come to the council some years ago because one of the branches was overlapping his fence, that was removed. That's right, Richard, do you remember that? Now, fine. I have been, to have a look at this on separate occasions, I have got the photographs here, I have measured how far every tree on that side of the Royces Rec is from the fences. And the tree in question is the furthest away from any fences. Having said that, I understand that some people would like the trees removed. Some trees are diseased, and I have done an audit on the trees on that side of Royces Rec, and there's one I feel should go immediately, or as soon as possible. However, I have got the photographs of the said trees, so that the tree on the, if you pass it round, the tree on the left is the one in this tree.
Okay.
The, this one without the leaves, without the pruning, was how it was in the winter and in the summer. Having said that, we have pruned the summer one considerably. Now then, this tree, said tree, is not diseased, it is a nice tree. And if you look at this photograph, the other tree on the right is very much nearer the fences. That's the old tree, the big tree, and that's the tree in question. I do feel that I would have liked more of the said tree pruned than it was. And I think the lady in question came in and thanked us for doing it, and I said to her, I am not satisfied with how it's been young. And I do think that we could trim that considerably, but it needs doing along with the other trees, which is going to be a fair-sized job. I wouldn't recommend felling at all, because it is a lovely tree, and I have spoken to so many people in Royces Rec, saying this tree is likely to be felled, and I've had so many people saying, don't let it happen.
Right, okay, thank you, can everybody focus?
Can I just say, you can't put a two hundred pound mature tree in, that is not, anybody who knows anything about trees, you do not put mature trees in, because if they fail, you've got the same problem. You need to put in a three to a four-year-old tree.
Right, okay, I'm going to come to Martin first, because he has.
Yeah, it's just someone, not who are. I've been handed some photographs from, I've been handed some photographs, which I'd like, if your permission, to hand run, which it actually shows how they affect the two residents from internal.
Oh, that's the picture round.
And one of the things that these photographs don't show, which we've been circulated this evening, is they don't show the addition of, I believe, three new trees. So when you look at these, you have to bear in mind that these people are going to.
Let's have those pictures around, because I will be concluding this within five minutes. I will be looking for a decision within five minutes, because we cannot spend much more.
No, but I think we, I had seen pictures and they haven't.
Can I show you that, David, you want to add something to this?
We've got to do it properly.
Yes, I think from memory that they can be actually trimmed back quite drastically with a weak head of trees and allow them to come back again. They'd be better by trimming them back, but we can't do it while all is.
That's September.
Well, autumn, sort of, I think.
Okay. What percentage are you talking about there then? We've all got eighty of these trees.
Yeah.
Like, how much?
Fifty percent.
Right.
Fifty percent.
I went up to have a look at this, and this tree along that hedge is furthest away from the fence, of about half a dozen trees, and at the moment, it doesn't have a heavy property. It just reaches. I would be totally against felling this tree, and I would suggest that we do some full maintenance.
David?
Yeah, as Joyce said, if we're going to take action of pruning the trees, then we should do them all.
Yes.
And so they all match, and then we'll have another, probably five to ten years before we'd have to do them again.
Can I just say that we've put five tyahakus in, which is the giant flowering cherry, five, and we've only got three whilst they were vandalised, and they're not, they're not the best specimens at all. We put one in, Vince and I, we've still got another one to locate somewhere, but I don't know where.
Well, you might be locating, but this one's felled, right, Vince?
Can I, can I propose?
Well, I'm happy to, what are you going to propose?
Well, I would like to propose that the trees are looked at a maintenance programme with the appropriate bodies, with a proposed look of making a fifty percent reduction into the coverage of the trees, and with a maintenance programme properly scheduled every twelve to twenty-four months.
Yes.
That is my proposal.
All right. Well, thank you, that's a proposal, I'm not going to accept a second just at the minute, I was going to say, this is your report, Martin, I want to know if you want to come back on that or not.
Well, generally, if someone proposes, you have to get the second on it, and we've got him before me, so I would be happy, because I would vote against if that was my view. So it's, it's not a problem, it needs to be seconded.
Okay, so the proposal on the table is that a, well, basically, what Vince said there, that a substantial procedure is taken out on this tree where it is reduced down by fifty percent, and then the ongoing maintenance is done. I think that you should build a caveat in there that if the tree is shown to still cause an issue, because actually, I can understand that if the residents have been, had an issue with this for twelve plus years, that whereas it is a very nice tree, and I like cherry trees, for some reason, that we must take seriously the concerns of the residents, and if, after this, that the pruning and maintenance is not effective, that I would expect this to come back to the council, in which case I would be pushing quickly felled. So if this is not successful in a year or two years to come, we must not write this off, there's a potential that the residents can come back. But initially, we have this proposal.
Change my proposal to include that caveat, I'm more than happy to.
That the members of the public can come back, if we need to be getting the feedback to ensure that they're happy, because they may not be happy with the decision being made, but they need, we are doing something that is going to hopefully address the issues that they have, that we need to be open to, to support the people of town.
Just one thing, we said that if one tree's going to have to be pruned by, we need all done together.
I'm not interested in that, I'm sorry, but there's one item on this, and that's one cherry tree, so that is all we're talking about.
I accept what David said, he is absolutely right, we need to, I think personally, we need to look at this tree, look at the way that it is affecting the residents of the area. This, to me, is, I believe, very compromised.
Yeah.
And in the event of two years down the line, that you're not happy with the conclusion, or a year down the line, if you're not happy with the conclusion, then we readdress it.
That was proposed, seconded by, David, all those in favour of that?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six. All those against, abstaining, oh, you're against it, Michael?
You can vote.
I keep forgetting to vote. I'm against it as well.
That's three, six, seven, eight.
That's fine, Mrs.
I'd say, I think I was sort of a bit wrong, but well, you need to.
I mean, gentlemen, because ordinarily not, but on this occasion, because it is such an emotive issue, I will allow you to make an additional comment.
Thank you, I'd like to say, yes, I can see your point about the tree, and I argue it is a beautiful tree, but we've got it twenty-four cent, not just to walk past when it's in bloom, you know, and it would appreciate that matter. It might be, perhaps you think too far from the fence, debatable, but it does cause us an awful lot of hassle, and there's no two ways about it. And I think, did the proposal, yes, to drop it back by fifty percent is a good one, but it's still on a regular basis and maintained, and we don't have to keep going back saying, well, where are you?
Yeah, I think, I think this proposal, this decision, this decision helps to keep the tree there, it also helps address some of your concerns, but it also leaves the door open, which is a good one, so we'll draw a line a bit there.
Yes, I think that's very fair.
I'd like to thank you for bringing the item to the council, I'd also like to thank you as well for conducting yourself in such an appropriate manner as well, because some people find it necessary to act out of order on these matters, and you've demonstrated a lot of.
I've always tried, at the times we've been down to it, I hope to be reasonably polite, Mr Brooks, as a sensible manner.
No, it's been, thank you ever, it is greatly appreciated. So we, and by the way, I'm not kicking you, Andrew, but, and there are three vacancies on the council, by the way.
I've got to say, now, it's, I would have enjoyed your company, but.
Okay, item eleven on the, on this agenda is that the green flag had its over, Joyce. Or if everybody's read the purple paper, in essence, it's that the recommendation from that purple paper is that, that an application for green flag status for Cuts Close is submitted in 2016. So I open this up to the table, it's self-explanatory, I think Joyce has written a good report. Alf?
Two questions, really. Two questions. What's the time scale for applying for green flag in 2016?
November the first.
It's got to be in by November the first, this year?
Yes.
Okay, so what are the workload implications then for the staff for doing that by November?
It's already, now it's done, isn't it?
Thank you very much. How much time is it to do, Alison, you did it before, how much time does it take to do green flag?
Well, the majority of the stuff is there, do you agree with that? Um, it's just changing, it wouldn't require a lot to change.
I think what it would depend on is whether the actual green flag criteria have changed any, what they actually want in the green flag application from when it was first done, whether that has actually changed, so from what Alison did beforehand.
Don't change it.
Well, I mean, obviously, if that has changed, then that's going to mean a, you know, a degree of additional work, but the bulk of it has been done, obviously, there are things that are happening over the next few months, so skate park going in, we've got events going in over the summer, so cameras out, please, so let's get up to date photos in the portfolio, et cetera, et cetera. The application round opens from November, but I don't think the application's going until January.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so in essence, it doesn't sound like block office's time, the application, I don't know, pretty much, right?
Sorry, I would be objecting to this, because I just see it, yes, we're a small council, and the money involved, to me, is, it just, to me, seems pointless, and I don't mean that in any disrespect to the work that Alison originally put in it, I saw the folder, she did an extreme, you know, large amount of work on, on the project, and we got a green flag and in the paper, but unfortunately, it's not just a case of doing the report, there was, there are other things such as using the website, if you're not going to take up the, the perks of the green flag, I don't see the point of doing it, and the council has never taken up the perks of the green flag, having the webpage on the green flag site, it's not just making a report, there's a lot more involved, and recommendations like I mentioned earlier about the signage was ignored, and I know we're a new council, and hopefully we're going to do things differently, but I, it's a tiny little park as well, and people know I photographed in the past up to it, because I've objected to the money being spent on it. The park is cleaned once a day, but when the judges come, and it'll be the same for Oakham and Bloom, there's an extra clean, so it's a false presentation. On a sunny day, you can go to the park and it is absolutely full of litter, so I find that the green flag doesn't actually, let me just finish, I don't think that the green flag is justified at some expense.
Okay, has anybody else got any comments they'd like to make, otherwise I'm looking for a proposal out.
Just a quick one, I have to disagree completely with that approach, I think it's an excellent idea, and I think that last Sunday, when we were in the park, there was four, five hundred people there, all listening to the band, all making comments about the tidiness, and how well the park is being kept. and how well the, the park is being kept, kept. Now, if it's being that well administered, that well maintained, it should be no problem, I don't think at all. I, I don't, I see the amount we're spending there to be minimal.
Right, I'm Joyce.
Uh.
And then Vince, if you'd like.
You perhaps don't know enough about green flags sometimes, some people. I go, when I go on holiday, I look on the website to see where the green flag has been awarded. Some of the parks are minute compared to that, to the noises, the cuts close are absolutely minute. Then you go to somewhere like Matlock, where it's big. The point is, there, it's like Oakham in Bloom, there are different categories of two acreage or whatever you call it. And we're in a particular category, we have got the kudos, we will be telling everybody that we have got the green flag, it will go up the pole, the pole is already there, it was put in the first time we went in the green flag, all we've got to do is get the award and get the flag.
Right, Vince, I'm no, Michael, come to you.
Um, just reiterating what Alf said really, I walked through the park this evening on the way to the meeting, very proud of the fact, the park looked outstanding.
Yeah.
Um, it does actually look beautiful, very proud of the fact that I walked through it most days. Sunday, I was on duty, so I was unfortunately not able to be there, the town was buzzing. The feedback I've got from people about the park, the town and everything else is all been positive, actually no negative whatsoever. And regarding the comment about we don't pick up on the perks of the green flag, I might suggest that if there are perks that we had, we put those ideas forward and we use that as an agenda item, so we may pick up on those.
Okay.
So I would propose that we actually go for this award.
You're, you're, I was going to come to Mark next.
No, no, you have to speak first, if people haven't spoken.
No, 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 it's over you, Mark.
That's my second chance.
At last, probably.
Yes. If we go by just standing orders.
Go on then.
Sorry, um, no, but I, I, I don't want to argue the point, but I have hundreds of photos when we get a hot day, we haven't had a hot day yet, and then one example is when Prince Charles came to visit this town. I actually did a video on the day when the town was all swept and the park was full with so much rubbish, it's out there on YouTube, so it, 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 when the park is used, it is a tip.
Right.
At the moment, we haven't got into full summer, I'm not saying that as a criticism about the park, because as Richard, I said to Richard when I talked about it, what is done when it is cleaned, it is done well. But when people actually really use it on a hot day, it is a tip. But then people make sure it's cleaned up when the judges come.
Mark, can I do?
Yes, and Martin, you're completely wrong, I visit the park at least twice a week with my grandkids and it's never any witter.
Excuse me, I can show you the photos if you want to see them.
Right, I'm going to hold point of order there, I'm now going to state some for the record. We are talking about green flag, we're not talking about whether the park is a complete tip on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, or whether it's tidy two of the days of the week. The fact of the matter is that the member has got a very valid point which is put across, so is this one, so is this one, so is this one. We've now heard those debates, those arguments, it doesn't have to be restated, if Alf has said that he disagreed with Martin, Martin doesn't have to say that he then disagrees without disagreeing with Martin. That kind of procedure is not a place for this council chamber, it is not constructive, it is not good for debate, and I will terminate conversations or debate if I think we're going off track, we went off track. I accept that what Martin said is true, because he said it, I accept what Alf said is true. What I'm now looking for is that Council Lucas has put forward a good and poor, so he's put forward a justification for having the green flag back. Are we looking for a proposal that this is?
Can I, I'd be for a vote, in any sense, request a vote.
Proposed by Vince?
Avoided proposal from the previous day.
Right, thank you, the second is by Paul, all those in favour of the green flag? And all those against, such as Martin against, sorry Martin.
That's, that's how I should put it.
And thank you, Council Lucas and I, let's try and stick to the points and let's not fall out. Okay, now let's fall out over, I'm 12, which is the Christmas like tender. Now, this is actually my point, now there might be a little bit of confusion here, because in actual fact, this came up at a previous council meeting, at a previous council meeting, we did agree that this council would begin the tendering process. The only reason it's back on here is because it never actually got rolling, so it's only here really again because of that fact. And also, a few items have been tidied up. Um, if everybody's read this, which I'm sure you have, it's looking at the decision. I'm going to open this up straight away for any comments or debate, and then I'll take it. Okay, Michael.
How, how close to the testing cost, as stated in the yellow pages, do you expect the tenders to be?
Pretty accurate, I'd say.
What I mean is how adjacent will various tenders be?
Oh, right, oh, I don't know, I cannot pre, I cannot preempt what tenders are going to be differently, but we are, our indicative cost, what we believe our tenders will be, where we budgeted round, is based on historical tenders.
It seems quite a lot of money, I think that's where I start.
It is a lot of money. Um, and when you see the tenders coming, Michael, I think you'll begin to realise that unfortunately, what I perceive to be somebody running the ladder with a string of wires and hooking them on a hook and plugging them in, and actually when they come to do it professionally, properly with, um, proper testing, electrical testing, anchor point testing and storage, these firms maybe only do this once or twice a year, maybe this is where they make their money. So that it's.
There doesn't have to be such a big firm as this one that does shopping centre.
Ah, right, we, we actually, the tendering process, what part of this document say we're going to go out to a tendering process? So we're going to invite every man and his pet rabbit to put in a tender. Now, if somebody comes back and says we can put your lights up for half this price of what that company can, then the council will make the decision when he comes back. So all this is doing is saying, we've got this amount of money in the budget, we're now going out to tender, it doesn't mean we're going to spend that amount of money. But historically, this is how much it has cost of the professional companies that protect the council's integrity and reputation.
And health and safety.
And health, yes, the health and safety as well. So, yeah, so unfortunately, yes, it can be.
So nobody in the town or the area is big enough, competent enough to do this job?
Well, we don't know yet, because nobody's, the tender hasn't been out, so we haven't had those tenders for anyone.
Well, have we had tenders from local people at all?
Yes, and tenders from local people before have not been far off what we, what we paid last year. Sorry. Okay, um, Alf.
I see that we're going to exclude Mill Street this year.
And Church Street.
Any reason why Mill Street and Church Street have been excluded?
Uh, because, um, the, the lighting that we have, the ice core lighting is best utilized when it's strung across.
Okay.
And now Mill Street, it's strung across the front of buildings, last year there was probably lighting in the front of the, what is Calicoes, and some of the lighting wasn't on for a period of time, it was also scaffolding up so it could be utilized. Um, and also, we tend to put lighting on Church Street in the front of one particular business, which is Ford's at Oakham. And it seems inappropriate or unfair to all the other businesses, that we seem to almost light one business, but none others. So we have a limited resource. There you are, uh, and the idea is, is that we focus on the main street, the working group that is being suggested here, working with councillors, is that they will approach businesses and encourage, as has been previously said at meetings, that members of the town, the shop owners, should be encouraged to do their own thing on their shop frontage. And, and that is what is going to be encouraged by that.
Which of course, that's what Mills.
Yeah, um, I'm very pleased to hear that, because I, I've always thought that there should be some form of contribution from the traders, they seem to be benefiting from the lights.
Indeed.
But not contributing anything towards it. It's going to be difficult though, if, if we're going to try to extend the light centre to the West End, if we are, to get traders in the West End only to contribute towards it, because traders in the rest of town are now used to receiving that benefit and would probably not be liable to providing it towards it.
Possibly, that, that is.
Doesn't make, doesn't make sense, because we're trying.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's time now that we should, should be starting to approach the traders to say, contribution towards it, because again, there's free.
The council reenact us and you'll get a little match of the rules at times. Uh, Michael?
You didn't mention Northgate also being excluded.
Correct.
Northgate's never been there.
No, no, it says Northgate, and that's a fact, it's only really up to Ford, which is on Church Street. So Northgate hasn't really been included, I think.
Uh, you list them all.
Oh, the Wheat Cheats, yeah.
Wheat Cheats, yeah, there's some shops up there, uh, picking the point, if all the traders in, that's a very attractive area. And the church street, the church lit up, the school chapel visible, it seems a genuine place not to embellish with the lighting.
It, it does, and, and this could be something that the, the, the working group, if it's formed out of this, could go in to talk to it, because at the moment, we, we light the whole of the town. And as I said at the beginning of this report, or at the beginning of this particular agenda item, these lights are best strung across, and it's actually looking at how best to utilize the lights. And if we, if we go to the full extent of the high street, and we go all the way down to the mini roundabout, which we didn't do this year, and we go all the way up to just past the white line, which we didn't do this last year, this is where the lights that are currently just strung across the fronts of shops at Ford's and on Mill Street, and possibly then at Oxford Street, are not being best utilized. And we're showing favour to individual shops and businesses by streaming requests up, and we need to be a fair, fairer on how we use the, the lights.
Will the Wheat Cheats contribute to it?
Well, that's one of the things that the working group would do. Uh, I was convinced we were going to say something.
Oh, I was going to say, previous meetings, we have discussed about setting a working group after the Christmas tree debacle of, uh, 2014, so again, I would like to propose that we set up a working group.
That's item six, that's six on that decision you've come up with.
Yeah, I would like to propose that we set up a working group sooner rather than later, because we are June and we do need to be making decisions, um, so that would be my proposal.
Okay, uh.
I would like to, yeah, I would like to make my comment before proposing, so I made. Um, I've made a couple of notes, um, the, the, um, the first one was, um, the Tim Norton tree. That's in his property and as a council, we're not allowed to support, um, particularly in this case, a business. If they want to replace their bulbs in their tree, then I believe that Mr Norton is well enough, well off enough to provide his own lights for his own tree. It's not on a public highway, I went to look at it, it's in his, it's in his church, which I don't understand why this town council ever paid for it.
Okay.
Um, the, I hope we can sort the Christmas tree, I'm not sure why we've mentioned the rotary in there, why we have to sort of, I'm not saying we shouldn't be friends with them, but I thought it was already agreed by the council that the council were taking it from the rotary, they did actually write and say they didn't want to be involved. Um, the other point is, um, subcontracting, that is the biggest problem that we have with this contract. I, over the years of this contract, came down and spoke on each time with the subcontractors and they told me, and I've blocked it, that basically they receive, if they're lucky, about £2,000 from light. And most other councils have clauses in their contracts that people don't subcontract. So you have to ask the question, we purchased the lights in the first place, so that's why you're expecting it to be high in the first year, and I assume we still own them and we still have them. So then I move on to the, the surprise that we're going to actually take lights away from the town. We have a budget which is quite high, and most people think it's quite an extraordinary amount of money for what they get in the town, surely we should be sitting here this evening saying, well, we own these lights, we find someone cheaper to put them up, and we find some new lights. And with the record of light and the things that have happened over the three years, I, I, obviously we can't refuse them if they came to us to tender, but I don't believe that we should approach them on the basis of what they actually did. Um, and also, there was a mention of local contractors, I'd like to do this officially, because I have given it to the club. I have, I don't know this man, and the club is entitled to actually, and the council, to approach people and to ask them to tender. A local businessman said a local company would be willing to tender to put up the things, it was a local man from Melton who trashed them before, and so people are able to do it locally.
Okay.
So if I could give that to the club, or just say that that can be.
Alf?
I mean, what, what we're talking about is a tender process.
Yes, and we, we, we're crashing our own tender process, we're going to advertise.
All we need to do is say, we'll go through a tender process, and we're going to advertise, and that will attract either local and national contractors, we don't need to be looking at local people.
Right.
One, one of the things, um, I think we ought to do is to obviously take on the tree, for last year, light the tree and also the tree at the library. That is, that is in a prime position there to be the community of the town, and I'm not sure who actually likes it, if it is lit, is it camp?
It's not lit, and RCC, I believe, are quite open to it being lit by the open chair councillors, we take it.
But, I mean, on this though, um, how far are we intending to go this year? Are we just purely going up to Wilkinson's?
Uh, no.
Or are we going to continue into the West End?
The ice core lights, looking at going up to just past the white line and coming all the way, yeah, and coming all the way down.
To the, uh.
Christian, yeah. Um, and all the way back down to the mini roundabout between the top of Westphalons and the restaurant.
Okay.
And then down Mill Street, oh no, down Jail Street and Ignite Place.
Okay, and including the new, the tree we're going to erect and the tree at the library.
Yes, yes, the, yeah, that, yes, we've got the tree in the library there, yeah. And, and the, that's, I think about Tim Norton, my understanding was, is that the lights in Tim Norton's tree were put up by the council, but Tim Norton's allows us to put the, the lights in there, it's his tree, true? But he pays the electricity for it.
Well, the council are doing mining there.
Um, okay, what I'm going to do, unless there's any other questions, I'm going to take each one, I'm going to take these decisions one at a time for clarity, so decisions required, fine.
Can I just, they have one last little comment, and the comment was made that we don't have to approach local people, I'd just like to object to that, to the chair.
No, that's fine, we will approach, we will, the thing is, we have to be careful, that we, 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 right, just to clarify, the reason we approach people like light and people that have previously done the work is that it seems to have been a process which is not unreasonable, in other words, they did it last year, so we, they naturally get invited to tender again. We advertise to encourage businesses to go, if local businesses don't want to play ball, it's up to them. However, you've handed the card over, Richard, I'm sure, with the blessing of the council, will approach this guy and ask him if he wants to tender.
And can I also suggest that perhaps he gets the Thompson local up, because the people where you, the local companies.
Right.
No, no, this is.
Surely you can, you can't do this himself.
Right.
Because the people don't read the adverts, I've talked to the contractors, they're not aware of.
Can I question, uh, request a question, make what?
Yes. Right, okay, what the, the, what the club gets out of Thompson, Tobin, or who looks at?
No, no, that they approve, local people.
Right, here we go, right, this is what I'm going to do, um, decision one is to authorize, this is a proposal, to authorize the advertising of tendering in the local press, this tender will be for the existing lighting tenders as detailed above, uh, sorry, this will be the existing lighting is detailed above with the exception of Mill Street, Church Street, Northgate will not be lit. I will add in there that as well as inviting previous tenders, that we will even, we will approach the people that have been brought to the tension of the light.
But could I amend that, that it's not specifically just that one, that the council does approach local businesses? It's not a difficult thing, and people laughed at me, but when I've spoken to local businesses, they are never aware of the things we've had it with the bands.
Right, what we, 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 thank you, thank you, on there, we'll go out to tender, advertise it, and we will, we will approach what we believe are appropriate electrical contractors. I'd like to bang that one more time, that will cancel the meeting there for a bit.
Can I just, can I just make a comment on the, you know where we've said it's just going to be the high street?
Yeah.
We're going to go out, when we put the tender out.
Jail Street.
Yeah, when we put the tender out, maybe we should put it out in a manner that we ask what they are prepared to do for the, for the town, rather than we say, we just want the high street there. So because.
We have a.
The, the West End, people at Burley Road, that we have twelve businesses on Burley, or three businesses on Burley Road, will get no illumination whatsoever, and they feel slighted, but Mill Street does get illumination. So to me, the tender that it goes out needs to be worded in a fashion that doesn't actually specifically say X.
Right, tenders have to have a parameter, otherwise you end up, or you don't end up with a tender, because a tender is based on a given parameter, so that all the people that put out tendering are all potent on a like for like. If you do it where, what can you give us?
Yeah, I, I accept that, that's why I sort of thought we should go straight for, um, the working group to set these parameters out, I don't think this is the place.
Okay, what we can do is, it can be that when it comes, when it goes to the tender point, we can say what we're specifically stipulating we need and look at that as point A, and that if they can sort of say, what else could you do with this street or that street? But it doesn't mean we have to commit to that, because that's what we've done on previous tenders, yeah? Uh, I'm going to come to Michael.
Can we then ask for a tender on A and B?
You can ask for a tender on A and B.
B would be to include, uh, Burley Road, it would be to include the bottom of Church Street and Northgate, and anywhere else that is. and anywhere else that is good.
Okay.
And A would be as you believe.
Yep. Well, okay, what we'll do is we're going to go out to tender. It will be based on two tenders. A, as per what's stated here, which is none of the side streets. It'll just be the High Street, Jail Street, Marketplace. And tender B would be to include what we had last year, which would be Northgate, Church Street, Burley Road, Mill Street. That sort of thing, yeah?
Was Burley Road on there last year?
No, it wasn't.
No, two, two, it's the same, yeah.
All right. So, right, you're going to add to this.
There's just one last thing and could we also?
One last thing, last one.
Yes, sorry, did I say that? And could we also ensure that the people who tender are not actually told what we expect like a budget?
We don't do that. That's inappropriate with that.
But it has happened in the past.
I can't comment what's happened. What we do from here on in is the right way.
So we might actually get some different prices.
Do you know what it is?
Well, this will number one.
Right, the proposal one is to authorise the advertising of tender in the local press. And it's going to be in two parts. They're going to attack, ask for tender on A, which is High Street, Jail Street, Market Street or Marketplace. And also B, which is going to be all of the aforementioned plus what we did last year, which was Northgate, Church Street, Mill Street and Burley Road, okay? That's the proposal seconded by Stan.
And I'd just say you missed up Market Street, though you did say it.
Yeah. The fine details that are in the marketplace.
Are we putting the Christmas tree?
No, no, forget the Christmas tree for a minute. I'm coming to that. So seconded by Stan. I did propose it, seconded by Stan. Okay, all in favour? All in favour? Uh, you abstaining or against?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, right, okay. Right, so item two follows. It's to authorise the club in consultation with the vice chairman to approach specialist Christmas lighting companies with regard to the tender. These to include existing suppliers and installer. So it's proposed by Alf, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? Paul, that's unanimous, thank you.
Can I just, so no, I wasn't voting for it. Because if if you can't approach local businesses, then I don't approve of that being.
Local businesses.
So I'd like that recorded, please.
So you're voting for that reaction?
I'll vote against that.
So the one that you said where you wanted local businesses involved?
But you didn't include that, did you?
No, I amended it just at that rate last second when you said.
You amended it.
Yeah.
I'm totally confused on that because I thought you did, I thought you'd done it.
No, it's to, it's to, all right, let me start again. Item two, to authorise a club in consultation with the vice chairman to approach specialist Christmas lighting companies or people that previously tended with regard to this tender as well as the local businesses suggested by council broads.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. And whoever proposed it and seconded it, are we all proposing again?
I'll second it again.
Al, Vince, all of you, you can add us. Yeah, come on, okay, thank you. Sorry to cause confusion there.
We've got to get it right.
Yeah, no, you're right. Right, item three. Item three, David, this is where you're going to come in. The council that seems responsible is going to take over the tree. And what it is, last year the council got bailed out by Chris Hamilton, there's no secret about that, from Ashwell Garden Centre. And I'm being very bold here in saying that, in my opinion, we should approach Chris Hamilton or Ashwell Garden Centre and ask them to provide the tree again this year and light it. And when the year is over, to dismantle it and dispose of it. And that there's a budget of fifteen hundred pounds especially is allocated to water. Any comments?
Chris did say last year that he would be prepared to do it.
Yes, do you want me to approach, do you want me to approach Chris?
No, we would have to do that professionally, no. No, if we agree to it, it would be approached by the club.
Michael. That garden centre has not been owned by him for some time.
No, no, we're sorry.
That's a very modest point, but he's not.
All right, okay, sorry, right, we approached Chris Hamilton, the guy, the guy that did it last year and asked him if he will provide a tree again this year and light it and then dispose of it. So in other words, instead of rotary club doing it, we're passing it over to the individual that helps the town out last year.
No, that's, if you're asking the actual garden centre, that would be a G group.
Yeah, good point, thank you, I didn't know that.
They're all going to be mentioned, mentioned.
Right, thank you. Is there a proposal to, proposed by Alf, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? Thank you, please. Um, uh, all right, all right here. That is to authorise a club in consultation with the vice chairman, propose a level.
Three and four, take it.
Right, that's reinforced, the four will be barred, three.
Six, all right, five, five, we've got seven.
Yeah, right, number five is to agree that decision was made at council meeting on August the twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, in relation to tenders having been received. That's, that's just a timescale thing, isn't it? We don't need to vote on that, do we, Richard? What do we need to vote? Are we bringing it back?
Well, the issue, the issue is that, um, chairman, is is it, if it's not August the twelfth, the council doesn't meet until another four weeks after that. So you are then into, uh, exactly.
Okay, so we need to basically, we need to get these tenders out and back in by August the twelfth for that meeting. Yes? So that's the date it's proposed. Seconded by. And then the last bit is that a working group of councillors is formed with agreement of monitoring, reviewing and also probably enhancing the lights. There's no doubt you will be able to achieve anything this year, guys and girls. But, but let's get together. So thi- this will break down into two parts. A, do we have a working group and B, who should be on it? Alf.
Does this also include contacting traders to try and get some consideration from them?
Yes, yes, yes. So you propose that we have it, seconded by Vince, that we have a working group. All those in favour of that? You're against it, Martin?
No.
You're, you're for it? That's unanimous, so. And then the last bit is, who's going to be on it? Vince?
I'd like to be on it.
I suppose happiness is numerous to work on.
David wants to be on it? Anybody else want to be on it?
I'd be on it.
Michael? The more that merit is on my heart, don't you?
Don't have too many, mate.
Michael, Vince, I think they're good, that's the whole council. We'll have, we'll have, we'll have fifteen new members by the end of this month, anyway. So I'm going to take this as well. At the moment, we've got proposed Michael, Vince, Adam and David to be part of this working group. Proposed by Alf, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? And that's unanimous. And obviously they will report back to the council.
Before we go off this subject, can I suggest and thank the Bush, oh, the chairman of this committee for all its hard work?
Have you taken the light last year? Okay, right. Item thirteen, trees to the rear of Tomford Road.
Trees, no.
Joyce and the club. Trees, uh, Richard then.
Well, um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, Joyce, myself and, uh, Paul Ford went to have a look at these. Um, uh, this followed these of where you, I sort of circled it there, you can just see the stump. That was the tree that fell onto, uh, thirty-four and adjacent property thirty-two. Uh, second time once born in a couple of years. Thankfully this time, uh, all that was done was a rotary dryer, which we've had to, uh, refund, uh, uh, the owner of number thirty-four for. So what you've got there is, you can see there is a quite clear defined line of willow trees, young willow trees overlooking these properties. Um. So it, all we're, all we're talking about here is just this line that are overlooking these two properties. There, there are loads more that need to be looked at, but that is for another time. Um, now, what has happened, it seems to have grown up out of the stumps or fallen trunks of the willows. That's what willow does, which is why it's sort of used for copper steam, because it grows so quickly. Can be up to two feet a year. So, um, Paul estimate, Paul Ford from Paul Ford Tree Surgery estimates probably at least ten years growth here. Okay, and basically the recommendation is that these are felled basically back down to ground level and that will probably be okay for five years.
Okay.
Um, that's the recommendation to decide whether, uh, council is happy for Paul Ford to do this work. Uh, estimated, uh, two days' work at four hundred and fifty pounds a day. Or, uh, whether we go out to, uh, other tree surgeons.
Okay, right, we're going to, thank you. Let's start, let's go around the table. We're going to start with Michael and we're left to right.
It seems to not be, but they're not really trees, are they? They're outgrown.
Yep.
In the way described.
Yep.
This doesn't constitute a tree, does it, Vince?
Sorry?
But these, these items are not really trees.
They follow the trees. They're not what I.
Well, this lot isn't, they're not a group of, they're just a series of outgrowths that these. What I mean is, you're not into a tree cutting down decision here, you're into.
Hold on.
Um, okay.
We're not taking the roots out.
No.
We're just taking them down to the bottom and let's sprout. This is a bookcase of actually not the trees being planted in the wrong place, but the house being built in the wrong place, because those trees were there, they were houses.
Okay, um, who was next down the line here? Was it Alf?
I was just going to propose.
All right, Martin, would you want to take some of that? Will you propose?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Um, I, I just wondered if, um, people had, all the people in the row had been constipated because of our consultation. Because if I lived there and I'm a tree liker, I wouldn't want to be looking at sheds and allotments from the bottom of my garden. Just a personal thing. Um, but then also, I know this is below the threshold that Mr Ford does a lot of work for the council and I think it's probably only fair that perhaps we should just go out to tender on this. And also, would we not consider a replacement? Because obviously there's a lot of wildlife affected there, a hedge for the people. But I, I think it has to be in consultation with the residents who live there. Because that's going to completely, we got the opposite of tonight.
Okay, and I'll come to Joyce.
No, no, the tall trees are not the ones that are going to be felled.
It's not very clear on here what they are.
No, it's this lot here.
So they will still have theirs.
Now, let me just say that I have to agree with Martin. Some of this work should be taken in as a whole and gone out to tender. The tall trees will have to go out to tender because we've got to do a consultation with people the other side of the book. Okay, so that's being taken care of. But it does worry me that we're doing all these little trees of average trees peacefully and we should be doing it all openly and transparently and getting it done properly with a.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm completely with you, David.
Probably we should have a survey and.
I think we have a survey. Richard and Joyce and the Paul Ford.
Yeah, I mean, a proper survey to see how we could sort the problem out. Because obviously, those trees that we fell, we've got to, they always have got to be cut back, which will keep growing, they grow every year, they grow a lot.
Okay.
So, um, we should look at it as one.
I've, I've got, I've got it. Vince, did you say something?
Yeah, just realistically, we're going to look at this bigger picture that we, we will be held accountable if we actually don't do anything. So I would propose that we look at a maintenance programme yet again for the, um, the trees in the background and the trees to be maintained or the copper stairs to be maintained.
Who's responsible for those trees?
The others.
Uh, Alf, you were going to.
No, I'll withdraw.
You're going to withdraw, I do propose, okay. So has anybody got anything, Michael?
I'd just like to be clear then, which trees we're talking about. I, I was. I thought it was.
Yeah, I thought it was a recently fallen tree.
It's not, no, it's not that.
It's not the ones at the back, this is considered.
And and all the ones at the back going by the counter?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they've got to be, they've got to be looked at as well.
Fully, completely.
That's why I'm saying about peacefully.
Thank you. On another time, talking.
Sorry, Sharon, but that's why I'm talking about peacefully, we should be doing it out to tender properly.
Yes, have we got a promote, promotion, proposal?
Yeah, I've proposed.
What?
What, that, that the whole thing is, is what, yeah.
Right, so this is where David said that there needs to be a more of, of. What did you say?
A praise of, of the survey.
Yeah, well, that's fine, well, yeah, okay, well, that's, in that case, that's the case of getting out an arboriculturist. We use a, we use a company called Symbiosis Consulting.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll get those out, um. Uh, because behind this. You can't, you can't see, you have to go down to the allotments to see the extent of the issue. This is just one small corner of the allotments. If you go back that direction, you've got willow trees at about seventy or eighty feet tall.
Yes.
Okay, the immediate issue for, for the two residents of, of Tolthor is what's going on here. That's their, that's, that's what their concern is.
I think we've got the message. Martin's next.
There was a proposal on the table, um, but, um, what I wanted to just, it will be the final point, so it is, um.
I can note that.
Yeah, it's, it's that we don't want a situation like we had earlier this evening repeating itself. So I'd like to just re-emphasise it, we are going to consider something, but we do consider these people who are our makers.
On the table was that from what's happened, we're going to go to Symbiosis or whatever they're called and get a full survey done before the work is carried out.
Mr Howard made a proposal.
Oh, sorry, did you, sorry.
Sorry, I thought we were going to do work where it was needed. But in future, because we have a problem with a very large tree and cuts close, Symbiosis is going to have to come and do another check on that. That could be thousands of pounds. We should be looking at trees, Royce's wreck.
It's not on this area.
No, but I'm saying the tree, the, the short trees really need to have something done soon.
Right, what is on the table is briefly, can I just clarify this because it's getting me confused. But we're talking, yeah, what we're looking for now is just to carry out the work on these small trees, small.
Yes.
Outgrown, which are just behind the fence.
Yes.
But what you're also saying is that we will be going to Symbiosis to get a, a survey on the other trees.
Plus the one that got.
Okay, right, I'm sorry. We're just looking at this. Well, this is headed Tomford Road. Let's not talk about, because I don't disagree with you, Joyce, but let's focus on, we started off with willow trees. Now we're looking at a tree survey of the county. Let's focus on the agenda.
I propose that we, um, get Paul Ford, the tree services to undertake that work at four hundred and fifty pounds a day, which is purely for the, the, the work on the tree, just as I was going to say.
Which is, yeah.
I think it's just.
So that's a proposal in line with the actual agenda item. That's a shocker. Anyone in the second, the seconded by Paul, all those in favour of that? Right, who's against?
I'm, I'm only against because point two is being ignored.
Right, you're against, yes or no?
Yes, but how do I put across a proposal for point two?
Right, what do you want to say about that time, two?
Well, surely we should have considered whether there was going to be a need for quotations before we appointed Paul Ford.
But I think the job is so small. Yeah. That the, there's no need for quotations, we're working custom like nine hundred pounds. If we're looking to do more work on the larger trees, then I'm agreeing with that. You know, but we need to know exactly what work needs to be done.
And I, and I'm not going to ask that the proposal is raised for Symbiosis to come out and do work on, on other trees. That needs to, if there's an issue with trees, I'm sure the tree warden or another councillor could bring it back to a future meeting saying, actually, we have got a bigger problem and our old estate of trees, let's then do it. But initially, we, this agenda item was brought because of a particular issue, which is the little trees. And I think we have lost that somewhere in that part of the agenda. So we're going to go to fourteen, Martin, you're going to add something to this?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just give the reason why I'm voted against it. Because I'm not happy with the fact that it says there that it will be up to two days' work. We're supposed to vote on specific costs.
We have voted on specific costs.
No, we haven't. This is open-ended. And it's, 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 it's open-ended in the fact that it's not even stated that it will be two days.
We've already voted on that.
Right, um, I hear what you're saying, but. Fourteen, community reception. Joyce.
You've got, thank you, Cameron, you've got the details there. And what I'm prepared to do and what I'm asking the government to do. Uh, the, there's, I should say four, there's five schools, primary schools. It, we get a lot of pupils from doing this reception, we get a lot of publicity. I'm just asking that it lapsed last year, let's get it done this year. Now, the folders, I am prepared to go to primary school and talk to them and give. to go to primary school and talk to them and give them the folders, but it has to be for the end of term, which I don't know when it is.
Three weeks.
So...
Say three weeks.
Three weeks.
Three week weeks.
Three weeks, and the only other thing that I was suggesting was that it's a two hundred pound prize, and whether that is enough, or whether it should be more, I just leave it to members, Alf.
Okay, Alf.
Two things, who's going to administer this, administer this?
Uh, this is...
How much time is it going to take to administer it? Um, what is, um, Joyce's proposal for the increase in the prize, what, two, it's two hundred pounds, what are you proposing?
I have no idea, it's up to members.
Well, you need something to go by, I mean, two hundred, five hundred, a thousand, two fifty, or what?
Any members want to play a figure in the amount?
I mean...
What is the two hundred required?
Why don't we take an example from the trees and just say up to two hundred pounds, you know, or up to four hundred pounds, you know?
Okay, Michael, wasn't this disgusting voting on these rules? There's a thing of déjà vu about this. Uh, it might be mentioned in a report, perhaps.
No.
Okay, can I make a... Uh, I'm sorry.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, I'm not against this, because we talked about this in the Promotions Working Group, but the, I think it needs a little bit more thought and planning, and perhaps it's better than we work on this for next year, or you, you didn't, no, no offence, but Mrs Lucas, Mrs Lucas didn't know when the school term finished, and she would be having to rush this with Alison over the next three weeks. We're going to do it, we want to do it properly.
And then Alf, Joyce.
If you had taken the trouble, everybody, the folder from Brookhill was left on the, on the table for everybody to look at, all we've got to do is find four or five blue, blue folders, put in the remits, and for me to hawk it round the streets.
Ah, of course not.
Alf.
That's all that needs doing at the moment.
I never fully understood what the respect shield was about, I must have, that's, that's my problem possibly, but why has it got to be done before the end of term? Um, why can't it, um, start beginning of the next term, which we've given another two months?
Okay.
And, and I, and I would, um, I would make a, a proposal, if that was agreed, then I'd propose that that would be started in September, and I would also propose that the prize rise to two hundred and fifty pounds, I don't like other trees.
Okay, uh, Martin, you're going to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to make a point, I don't know if everybody saw the folder, but nobody actually told me about the folder, and that's the issue, at the moment I'm finding that certain persons are not communicating with me about things.
Okay, Vince?
The, well, the folder was on the table, the fence, uh, I have read the folder, I've went through it, been through the criteria, and as sort of it's worked very closely with youth organisations in the past, I do feel that it is something that gives focused direction, and it would be, be good for the town council to be involved.
Right.
So I would second Alf's proposal.
Right, we have a proposal, but it's taken up, starts with the September term, and the prize is two hundred and fifty pounds. Seconded by, seconded by Alf, all those in favour? You know us? I think we should all get a respect shield for getting through that. Right, fifteen, fifteen gentlemen, thank you, Open Town Council logo, logo on new sports gear, I do not tell you what the decision is, is to decide whether Open Town Council crest should be on the new kit. Proposal, Alf?
Can I just make one comment here, but I mean, surely we're not just agreeing that it would have on the under fifteen girls rugby team?
Well, they're the ones responsible.
Yeah, but aren't we then going to allow the Open Rugby Football Club to have it on all of their shirts? Why just the girls?
I think we're responsible.
I know, I know we've done that, but why, why just restrict it to the girls?
Well, maybe it could be that wherever we sponsor somebody, that we have a caveat there, if anybody comes to us to sponsorship, we sponsor it, rather than this ridiculous thing come back and go, sort of go, yeah, we've been letting up a logo, we go, if we sponsor it, we expect our logo.
Absolutely.
That, that is...
If that's the case...
Yeah.
If that's the case, then can't we have open town councils across the front?
Martin. I think we have a proposal...
Don't say no, but it's a decision for the committee, not for you.
Yeah, yeah, well, now we've got a proposal, it's accepted, anyway, it's all Martin, that's...
Yes, I, I fully agree it should go on to the girls' t-shirts, I don't think it should go on anybody else's at the moment, because that's what we voted for to support the girls' t-shirts, um, and...
Right, it was proposed by Paul that the Open Town Council crest would go on the new kit specific to the agenda item, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? Would you have against or in favour of Michael? Right, thank you. Right, uh, sixteen, this is the council's current advertising summer concert on Rutland Radio, this is a report put forward by, uh, Martin, that Open Town Council uses Rutland Radio to promote summer band concerts, everybody has read this blue paper, the simple decision is decide whether to advertise the summer band concerts on Rutland Radio.
If we got a spare copy for the member of the public, then I won't have to read it out. But I'm sure he doesn't want me to read it.
Any comments? Martin?
Um, I, obviously I didn't stay, but, um, on Sunday, but some people said to me that the attendance was pretty low on Sunday, I don't know if that's a fact.
Definitely not.
But it is relevant to what I'm saying, because, no, no, but I trust when the members of the public talk to me, and then...
Okay, thank you.
No, excuse me, I'm just going to finish.
Everybody, thank you.
The reason why I just want to emphasise again is that asking for this, sorry, can I, I hadn't finished what I was going to say.
I wanted to know if you were going to propose that we accept this.
Yeah, I was just going to say basically that, that I'd like the council to accept it, because it's a, a new way of approaching the people, and to get our concerts...
Because all these two are getting the joint proposal, David.
Yeah, challenge abroad, we have a ball.
Right.
Well, just a few, how, how will we know what sort of response we're getting from this money we're paying in here?
I don't...
We already have five hundred pounds.
Right, I, I've already looked into where the coverage goes, Rutland Radio would not come back in term of what their coverage is, the Rutland Times have come back and told me what their coverage is, however, to a certain extent, this is a little bit irrelevant now, because we've got a paper that's saying, we, Martin's saying that should we advertise on Rutland Radio, and I'm looking for him to propose that we do, not just to say, Martin, that you hope the council agrees to it, you, you need to propose us.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I, what it says on there, but, um, we can't prove that it's going to do any better with, with anything.
So is your proposal then, is that Rutland, that Open Town Council...
Can I, can I just add one thing, just say that I find it extraordinary that this has had to come to council, because normally, people turn around to the clock and say, let's advertise in Rutland Times, nobody asks how much it costs or anything.
That's what we've been starting to do, so it's obviously...
Yeah, so, but it's an improvement, but it didn't happen for this year's Rutland Times.
Yes, and have you proposed that we use Rutland Radio? Yes. Right.
Seconded in need, well, second.
Hang on a minute, you're proposing that we vote on it?
Yeah.
You're seconding that we, I vote in favour that we use Rutland Radio for advertising. That's what you're proposing.
We've got a second of that.
Propose, second of what's that?
No, you don't propose them, that you vote on.
Yeah, right, okay. Right, I'm going to hold another point of order now on this council meeting, that this is not... We have a proposal that we vote on this agenda item, it's been seconded, does everybody want to vote on this agenda item, all raise your hands if you want to vote on this agenda item. Right, so you know us, we're going to vote on it, Martin, are you going to propose that we go to Rutland Radio as per your agenda item? All's agreed, it's voted to...
Oh, sorry, I, I thought they'd actually proposed it, well, that's a bit stupid proposal, wasn't it?
I know, it's a proposal, it is. It's your wording, David, so I want people to watch what they say.
Uh, okay, fine, it's so...
That's a, that's a, yeah.
Okay, so I will put the word in that we, that this town council, as written down there, uses Rutland Radio as a form of advertising.
Proposed by councillor Brooks as per the blue paper, seconded by Stan Stubbs, all those in favour? One, two, three, four. All those against, one, two, three, four. Absentions? Thank you very much. Um, I'm voting against that, okay, because I looked into the costs and we're already paying the paper, we're committed to the paper this year, that's why. Pinned a circus, uh... Basically, uh, what is this, they want to use the park further march till the sixth of March, is that right?
Alf, suppose we...
Alf, or Vince?
Just one point of interest regarding this, were we remunerated as a council for the damage that they did on their exit?
Yeah, they made good damage, they did. Well, it wasn't the pines, it was the fells, wasn't it?
Was it the fells?
It was the fells, they made good...
Is it, sorry, I take that back, I retract that, I thought it was a circus.
Everyone, well, everyone that's used the park...
It was.
They came from Tolthor.
Yeah, and that's, that's my, so, sorry.
Alf?
No, um, can, can I remind the council that they actually said they were going to review the use of cuts close, so we, we had a situation where somebody was recently allowed to go ahead, but this council said they were going to review it, excuse me, I'm speaking.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a valid point.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
It's a valid point, we are now once again, we're now once again going to approve, before we have made a decision on how people use and the fees, what was put through recently was a temporary thing.
The agenda item is, are we going to agree to the circus using it at this point? And we proposed by Alf that we do it, is there a second? Five, all those in favour? All those against? Martin, you're staying, Michael, you're...
I voted against.
I know, but mine was against, Michael was...
We're never going to change.
Uki, planning to agree on any comments to be made to Rutland County Council on item eighteen, this is the, um, this is primarily all to do with affordable housing. Any advice?
Just make a, sorry, one question, well, Michael, was it at the training programme two weeks ago, we were told that council, uh, county councils were reluctant to hand over the percentage of fifteen percent to parishes, heard that some of those, to what extent is that an issue? Well, it was at the...
I thought that was right down, but it would be fifteen percent, and anybody with any council with a neighbourhood plan would have twenty five percent.
Well, there's only one reference to it in these papers, on article two, I think.
So, it's a comment there, a comment there that we want to make is that, um, you know, where's our fifteen percent, is that what we're saying?
This, this, on the top of page two, we've got the, says what it, they're in time to determine the membership.
Okay, Martin.
I, I, um, was at that meeting or training, whatever, and it would seem that Rutland County Council are probably one of the few who seem at this moment to agree that that will happen, but it is being challenged nationally by other councils, um, I made some comments online, and one of the things that I did put in the question, I was number three according to the planning officer, was the, the, um, enforcement of affordable housing in Oakland, because it didn't seem, I asked them basically, are they going to enforce that when you consider that one of the biggest developers in the town quite publicly admits that they're not providing their quota?
Right.
It didn't seem very clear that, that how they would enforce this.
You make comments online, does anybody want to have any comments I want to make on this document there?
Can I just make a suggestion? Anything like this ought to go to the planning subcommittee and their recommendation control.
Okay.
I find, I find through thirty six pages of this hard work, actually, actually riveting.
Generated that since sixteen?
It's, um, it's the end of this month. I don't think we've got time for this one.
No.
In the future, it's...
Well, if I, if I could just say there, that, that members were told about this at the last county meeting of the council, that this was coming up, and all... Sorry?
I'm no doubt that happened.
Yeah, well, it did, so, so members have, have had sufficient notice, they've given all of the, uh, the website addresses for all of this documentation, um, so, so, no, it's not, it's not just come to this meeting, members...
It'll wait for two weeks, about a month.
Sorry.
Okay, right, we...
And it's got to be in by the end of this month.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it'll wait for two weeks.
Thank you. David?
Yes, in April, I did see the financial of the infrastructure, and I did actually make comments on it.
Online or to the directors?
No, I, I made comments at the council meeting after, I didn't know which you learned, I've got the notes on it.
Okay.
But I have got notes on it, I asked a lot of questions, and they, and good answers.
Okay.
So I mean, I have got information on that, but I've already...
You've already submitted, so I submitted information outside the council, you have my knowledge, I've submitted.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that this is part of the local plan, and I wouldn't think that it is appropriate for it to be passed to a committee of five people, it should be considered as a, a full council meeting.
Maybe has any comments, wants to make on this, I think.
Taken completely out of context, that statement, what I'm suggesting was it went to the planning subcommittee, which then recommended the council.
Right, okay, right.
I would want the timeline.
Don't think we have.
I want my time.
It's got to be on by the end of this month, which is...
Oh, CIL, second of July, but this one's very, very soon as well.
Or what? Or what? Well, it, 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 there's no comments, so we...
No, he only has any comments.
End of the month or what? Well, you can't submit comments beyond the end of the month, if the deadline passes, you can't, and the two councils already appear to have done, so they're on board.
I think it's a shame if we do not...
Representations to be received by Rutland County Council by four fifteen this Friday.
It's a shame if this council does not make comments on something that goes against, so we, we ought to be making those comments, and that's why I'm suggesting that we need to, to get this filtered down to specifics.
Can we, can we ask for an extension? Uh, can we ask for an extension, Richard, I doubt you?
Well, we can, I wonder if we can.
Right, Martin, you going to say something?
Well, I, I just said through you that obviously I slightly misunderstood what Mr Deuce was saying, but I agree fully with what he's saying, and this is a repeat of what's constantly happened in the old council, this is a very important document, not just for Rut, Oakland, Rutland, and we need to get it sorted, that we contribute, we can do it as individuals to our own opinions, but it's, it's appalling that the council
Okay, that's, that doesn't have this agenda on it, I was...
I mean, I actually was asked by the council...
Gentlemen, thank you.
Was asked by the council to approach Rutland County Council about this matter, and I did do, and I made notes on it, I did mention it at one of the council meetings, and on the ticket board, I did mention it.
You've said this, David, and, and whereas I accept what you're saying is accurate, I don't think that it was floundering now to look for some comments just for the sake of being seen to make some comments, is going to correct the fact that we haven't been prepared for this. Um, and if that means that we submit, the only comments that you can submit to Rutland County Council tonight is that members of this council have already submitted comments of their own accord, and beyond that, unless somebody has some amazing buzz phrase they're going to come up with, I, I'm struggling to see now this can come to any conclusion.
I, I made, my contribution was to mention about the affordable housing, so, you know, that's what we should be doing, debating it, not just sitting here and just saying, well, we didn't do it.
We didn't, we didn't do it, have we? Have we?
It is, it's mentioned, if you've read it, which I have.
Right, okay.
Not really, I don't...
Is, is there any comment that we can make on this, I mean, the fact that everybody has obviously read it and digested it completely?
Can we ask for an extension, first, Richard, to assimilate what David was...
Well, I mean, as I said, we can ask for one, um, whether we obviously get one or not, he's, he's down to Rutland County Council, so we can ask for one.
Okay, uh, there's a proposal from Michael that we ask for an extension to enable the council to, uh, make comments, well, seconded by Paul, all those in favour? Keep your hand above. That's unanimous.
And I also, um, propose that the planning subcommittee look at this and make recommendations back, back to the next council meeting.
Do you make that proposal then, that the planning subcommittee look at this and...
And go second to recommendations.
Proposed by Alf, seconded by David.
If I can just interject here, Chairman, the next council meeting is two weeks tonight. Planning subcommittee...
One on Monday? Or maybe a...
The next council meeting is two weeks tonight. Planning subcommittee is probably not going to meet until the day before that meeting.
Well, perhaps it needs to meet well before that meeting.
That's if the members...
If, if nothing else, you now have a timeline on when you can ask the RCC for their extension too. And then it's up to that planning subcommittee to meet well before that meeting. So, we have a proposal, seconded by the subcommittee, look at it, all those in favour? Are you abstaining for it? And against, you against, I guess it's a four against.
Chairman, can I ask the clerk on two? To decide whether Oakland Town Council, which used to be heard by the day of the summer, I would cut to a day...
This is a separate, this is community infrastructure levy, you've just done the SPD.
Right, it's, I'll tell you now, Martin, it's eight minutes tonight and we are not going to complete this agenda. I would request probably at this point that we go for an extension to quarter past nine, can I do that now? So, proposal that we extend the meeting to quarter past nine, seconded by Alf, all those in favour? Anybody, I ask unanimous. I'd appreciate if we could be succinct in any further comments, I'm not asking that we rush or not make comments, but let's not get bogged down, because I don't like extending meetings.
Excuse me, Chairman, it's also very unhelpful for me when people are laughing at me, but that's what's causing my...
No, thank you. All members, please be respectful of everybody in the room. Point noted, right. Nineteen, community infrastructure levy, draft charging, schedule.
Right, very, very quickly, everybody, I am going to assume that you've read this. I have, which is why I put that report out. As far as I can tell, everything is as it was in June 2013, apart from the fact that hotels are no longer included. Okay, so, community infrastructure levy, what does that mean? It means that fifteen percent of any money raised through CIL, regardless of whatever legal challenges are may be happening throughout the country, that is the current legislation. Okay? Now, the example that I have used is hotels are no longer liable for CIL. Okay, that is, that is a proposal from Rutland County Council. They have said that the viability study has taken place and obviously that hotels cannot afford that. Now, the anomaly is, of course, that a member of the public, an ordinary man in the street, will build a small house, relatively small house, of a hundred square metres, and will be charged £10,000 by Rutland County Council under CIL. A hotel of, I've used the example of two and a half thousand square metres, you've got the figures there, would not pay anything. Okay? Rutland County Council said that they can still use section 106 of the Town and Country Planning Act of 1990, and they possibly would do that. The issue for parish councils throughout Rutland would be that under section 106, there is no obligation from the county council to pass any benefits from 106, any 106 obligations, down to a town or parish council. Okay, everything else is pretty much the same. The other one is the reduction of retail, the CIL levy on retail warehousing, which was originally £150 per square metre, that has now gone down to £75 per square metre. The information is that that is to encourage that kind of investment in Rutland. Okay, so there, there are the two things.
Any comments? Michael, can we just clarify then, Clark, that under the old arrangements, section 106, there wasn't an obligation to pass down to parishes?
There is no, yeah. And 106 has been partly retained.
Or someone to sidetrack the new CIL arrangements then?
Well, the CIL arrangements are as detailed in the document there. That is the proposal that Rutland County Council wanted to take to the examiner. The four, the four or five classes that are there, residential, distribution, food retailing, supermarkets and retail warehouses, they are the only four that will be liable for CIL.
Okay, well, so that under the old arrangements, there was no obligation...
There is no obligation to pass it down.
Where it is used, there is an obligation.
Where, where CIL is concerned, yes, it comes down, yes.
To see where that can be, you know, how they're going to move between the two.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Alf?
I understand that you've contacted the county council, Richard, about the hotels, did you get a response?
Yeah, I said, "Why aren't hangers-on there?", and they said that a viability study has been done and to encourage tourism in the area.
Oh, good answer.
That's sort of been, I was going to question the thing about the hotels, because as people know, there is a planning application. I don't know if it was approved for a hotel in Oakland, but these people aren't for these big chains. You know, it just seemed a bit extraordinary that they would be exempt.
Okay.
Can I propose that we request that Rutland County Council reconsider their proposal that hotels should not be charged, but they should be charged at an appropriate rate, and that they confirm that the fifty percent of the CIL will be passed down to parish councils.
Okay, that's a proposal, before that's seconded, Martin?
No, I was going to second it.
All right, anybody got anything, or Martin's seconded it, actually? So, all those in favour? Unanimous. Congratulations. Hotels can be available to stock them out. Right. It's all good fun, isn't it?
The same part of that was, sorry, the second part, Chairman. So, whether you want that, you want to stand up in front of the public examiner in September, I believe, to put that point across.
There's a second part, though, whether you want to be up in front of the examiner. Martin, you do it.
Well, if the council has any comments, sensible comments, then I would do it myself.
Well, the comment would be this one.
Yeah, I'd be very happy to do it, I've stood in front with the man, the Q seat, the G teams wear, and I'm very good.
Could any, any particular council do this, so we specifically state that?
Well, no, well, what we will do, we will say that, yes, Oakland Town Council would like its representation, would like to be represented.
Given the opportunity to...
Yeah.
No, right, so, are you proposing, Richard, then, sorry, Martin, that Oakland Town Council has the opportunity to be publicly examined, basically?
Yes.
Okay, that's a proposable, Martin, that... Seconded by Alf, all those in favour? Unanimous. It happens. Item twenty, bins.
Yeah, very, very quickly, Chairman. This, this actually was brought to me by a member of the public, it seems to me to be a fairly logical thing to do, but the standard members, there is no access to this area of open space from the east side of the Marleythorpe Road. It's used as a cut-through for members, or sorry, students at Catmouth College. And in fact, when I took that photo, a dog walker was also walking as well, he had a heart event, obviously the dog went through the middle of it. So, there is no access regardless, it's a mess, and whether members think that it's appropriate to remove the railings, put a single bollard in there to stop vehicles going in, but allow the public to walk on to, what is it, at the end of the day, an area of open space.
Michael, is there an arrangement that when the building work by Bellway finishes, the white fence goes back to the rear of the house? There's a pond, there's a...
There's an attenuation of that, that's the boundary. That's the boundary, the pond will be fenced off.
So, the area will be bigger once the building is finished?
No, that's, that's the boundary, that's where it is.
That white bordering will be taken down, probably a lesser substantial fence. Can they, can they make this entrance when they do that?
I've no idea.
Well, it's, they're probably not.
This part of the land from where the, where the boundary is, Michael, that's the part of land that we are leasing.
From where the white board is? We're not leasing it beyond where the white board is.
No, because beyond the white board is, is the pond and the deterioration pond of the housing.
I want Vince first, Alf.
Martin was first. What is, Chairman?
No, Martin, go on then, let's see.
No, but I did point out that in an email about the access, so I was pleased to see that, but I think there needs to be another access point up at the school end as well, because that's where people, they're using it to climb over and walk through to into Huntsman Drive.
Get the water, the wood, there's an access.
But it's wood, it's, it's a broken fence, it's not proper, it's not proper access through the wood.
Yeah, I think, I think we shouldn't have put access in there while we've got the bins sorted out, because wherever the kids go to the school, camps going, I've had a birdwood in that, wherever they go, they leave a trail of litter. So, we don't want to know the park, and then finish up it covered in litter.
Vince? My only concern is that where this actually is, is straight on to the 640. Therefore, you have got a potential of somebody riding a bike, running, straight through there onto the main road. So, if we took that bar away, we would be liable. So, I would suggest that the proposal is slightly changed to incorporate some form of kissing gate type. Yeah, exactly. So that we have then mitigated that direct access onto the main road.
Perhaps, I, I, I agree with that, but perhaps we should, because if you've seen people stumbling over with dogs and things, we need a style, is what I think they call them on public footpath, so they've got a step up and over and also on the Huntsman Drive.
Who's on the access route onto school?
Yeah, it's not, then it has to be a gate that opens and closes.
Right, a kissing gate.
Kissing gate, yes, sorry. I don't know the names of all the things, but I neglected the disabled, not on purpose.
Right, thank you.
Do we need a proposal for a gate then?
Well, no, because it's not, we can't make a proposal for a gate. The only thing you can do now, if you're not going to accept this proposal on these words, is that you can do one or two things. You accept the proposal to have bins put in, and then you move to make an agenda, make a proposal that a gate, a quote is ready for a quote, is sorted for a gate. So, I would, I would move this forward by saying that break this down into two parts, is that we need to have bins there, because there are no bins on that area, and David's highlighted that, so I'd suggest the first proposal is that we accept that the bins put in.
I second that proposal.
Okay, so that's seconded by Vince, all those in favour of that? Okay, that's unanimous. And if people aren't happy with the railings being taken out, which it sounds like, that we ask the clerk to go out to look at, to put in a gate. It's those barriers, like on Old Swallow Road. Yeah, it's the one way or the other. Yes, we've still got a bike or a pusher, but you do it straight on the road. Yeah, well, that's obvious, yeah. But also, if we do that, that means actually doing more extensive work, so we'd have to get permission from pressure as well, because even though we've got a licence to have the land for a hundred years, before we do any work to that extent, because that's extensive work, we'd have to get permission. George, are you going to say something?
No, I really sense that...
Right, yeah, so, the proposal then is that we get the clerk to go out and look at this. Recess gates.
Yes, yeah.
Proposed by Paul, seconded by Martin. Because you seconded your hand, didn't you? No, George said, because she was a bit... Right, seconded by George, all those in favour? Unanimous. Keep the cameras.
Can I just ask what it's going to do with the work of the bins, what would put them in?
I think, well, it's... I would, I would think that it would be a local contractor. Mr Greggs. Mr Greggs, Jeff. Right. Planning applications, first one is Mr H, no, sorry, this is well, Mr B here, pitched roof over existing flat roof. Now, I mean, I don't think we've got plans on this, but the idea about putting pitched roofs onto flat roofs, I think enhances the...
I've looked at it, I quite want to, so I'd go straight ahead and say that we can approve it, because it enhances it. It's a tremendous improve, improvement on what's there.
Yes, okay, any other comments?
I'm seconded.
All right, I think George was going to second that, anyway.
Well, I was going to say I'd visit you every item on this of foot or bike, and I thought at the bottom of this application, there is no problem.